Pledge allegiance to the free states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for tuning out our first meeting of June on Zoom.
Good evening, everybody.
Okay, so up next we will have a roll call.
Mayor, I don't see Counselor Carson in here. Do you know if he's?
I haven't received a text or anything that he would not be in attendance.
I have not either.
Okay.
Okay. We will cause a roll. Mayor, there he is. Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Broyles?
Here.
Counselor Daniel?
Here.
Counselor Veho?
Here.
Counselor Grego?
Here.
Counselor Hensley?
Here.
Counselor Carson?
Here.
All counselors present and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Holly, would you take that vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item we have on the agenda is citizen comments. This is the section of the agenda to where we allow citizens to make comments. We do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. There will be time when you're having these comments and at the three-minute mark, we will notify you that your time is up, in which at that time, we will ask you to end your comments and we'll move on to the next person. Holly, did you receive any comment card?
I did receive a comment card from Sarah Ramirez. I believe she's in the meeting under Adrian Ramirez. I'm going to allow them in.
Okay. Brendan, if you don't mind, can you give instructions for those people who may be on the line to let them know how to participate and how to activate their system?
Yes, Mayor. For anybody that is using the application, you should be able to move your mouse over the application window at the bottom middle of the screen. You should be see a pop-up that says raise hand. By clicking raise hand, we'll be able to see you and acknowledge you in the attendees list here. If you're calling in tonight, you should be able to press star six to raise your hand on the phone.
Okay, at this time, if you are planning to have any citizen comments, please follow the instructions that Brendan just gave to you and our city clerk will recognize you and at the appropriate time, she will make sure that you're able to be heard. So we're going to ask just one more time if anyone who is interested in making any comments, please do so at this time by following instructions that Brendan just shared with you. And if we don't see any hands raised, we're going to move on after the comments that we have identified have been made.
Okay, Mayor, I let Adrian, the user named Adrian Ramirez, in. I think this is Sarah Ramirez.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry, I thought I had changed that. My apologies. Welcome. I don't know why I'm saying that, but I guess I just wanted to say that the events that have taken place excuse me, in our country over the last few or over the last week have, I think, warranted rightly so national attention and I would like to see our local government take action in some way, shape or form to address systemic racism. I'm not saying necessarily that it is a huge problem in our community, but I do believe it's a problem in our nation and we are part of that. And I feel like our kids are watching and I teach history, our students are watching. We should do something. I spoke with Yon the other day on the phone because he was really easy to get ahold of and also a social studies teacher and I appreciated so much his time. Maybe an idea would be to have a roundtable with members of our community regarding just how we can do the very best as a community, a local community to be the very best. So definitely including like maybe our almost the police force, maybe some local students, elected officials. I just feel like the homicide of George Floyd was a catalyst, a much-needed catalyst to capture enough attention that, like I said, we have a chance to speak up and this is a moment that will be remembered for.
Okay, well, thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your comments. Ms. Holly, do you have any other recognized people at this time before we move on and before I pass it on to the city manager and our city attorney for follow-up?
No, sir. I do not see anybody who have raised their hand.
Okay, so I'll pass it back over to our city manager and city attorney for follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. I had spoken to Counselor Veho a few days ago and he had mentioned the reminder of when in 2017, when we were seeing some neo-Nazi marches, the Charlottesville, some of the crime and things we were seeing during that time, council did do a resolution against hate. So I did dig that up. I think some of the language, it could still be applicable to this, but I also think what we're experiencing right now is much broader and more complicated as well. And so what I wanted to ask council about tonight is if council is interested in adopting a resolution urging for civil discourse and compassion and understanding and an honest discussion, but then also recognizing for us here locally, we're very blessed with the law enforcement officers that we do have, the diversity that we do have in our department and that while we need to be able to have these hard conversations to look at some longstanding societal issues, we also urge it to be done in a manner that recognizes the value of service that our law enforcement have also provided as well. And so if council is interested in staff drafting something like that, we could have it prepared for the next meeting.
Okay, Heather, and I noticed that we had at least three hands raised by council who would like to just make some comments right now. I have in this order counsel, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Veho, then Counselor Daniel. Counselor Hensley?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I apologize. I didn't write the name down. Was the person's name Sarah? Okay, so Sarah, I just wanted to let you know, I teach at Adam State and I hadn't presented this or said anything. I had quite a few of my students reach out to me a couple of days ago and they're wanting to put together a roundtable and sort of a session. And so they've asked me to help them facilitate it. So I know this isn't with my city council hat, but at the same time, wanted to let you know that there's something in the works there more for back to school, so the beginning of August. So I will from Yon get your information and reach out to you as a side note. And the hope is to include police officers and different people from the community and what they're wanting to do. So I just thought I'd mention that and that there is already some, I guess, being proactive in that area.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Veho, followed by Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to acknowledge Sarah for for voicing her opinions and her wants, needs and desires for this tough discussion, this tough stuff that's going on in our country right now. I don't know if it's the right time for me to say some of the things that I want to. I guess I'll just wait for council comment, but I will say this is that I am very in favor, Heather. And I would urge the rest of council that we get a resolution together, something along those lines of compassion and having a discussion or something about acknowledging that Black Lives Matter and that we do and at the same time that we have a very diverse and great police force in our city. And I don't know what else, but something, we have to start there. I think we need to get that going ASAP. Yeah, that's all I got for now. Thank you. And I just want to thank Sarah again for doing that.
Thank you, Counselor Veho. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to say thank you to Sarah. I think it's really brave and also really wonderful to have a conversation that's not angry and that's what I'm hearing from you. And so I appreciate that. I would also support a resolution redrafting, you know, it's not the same as it was before, but really having a different type of resolution kind. I also think it is really important that we engage in conversations and I like the idea of a roundtable. I think that that can also be pretty scary and intense. And so we just need to be super responsible with the way that that is set up. So I like that idea. I just want to make sure that we do it in the best way possible. The other piece is that it might also be worth it to talk about other outlets, other creative outlets that people could have or other ways, different people in the community, whether that be churches, whether that be schools or something, could bring conversations together and have them even in, so cross peer groups is wonderful, but that can also cause a lot of tension or just bringing peer groups together to kind of have support. So I think there's just different ways we can look at this as a city, but I'm 100% in support of standing behind what we do and advocating and saying that, you know, this was not okay and we cannot allow that to happen. And we are blessed with the police force that we have and really, you know, honoring that and talking, speaking up as leaders to say that this is not okay and not something we will accept.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego? Counselor Grego? Counselor Grego?
Hold on, Mayor. Sorry about that. I agree, resolutions are nice, but I think we need, I like the idea of maybe having some kind of roundtable. And I believe all lives matter in this country and hatred has no room in this country or in this world. But I believe that we need to do something, you know? There are the younger people looking at their leadership right now and they're looking at the federal level and it's not happening there. And sometimes it has to come from the local governments to get things moving and stuff. So I believe that we should do something. We should do some kind of roundtable, invite people and invite our youth. You know, we're not going to stand by and just let hatred take over this country. It's something that I know that our military and I've been in the military, we went so we could have a free country for everybody, all color, religion, everything. And I think we need to do more than just a resolution. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry about the mute. I'm still learning about this Zoom stuff.
It's okay. It's no problem. This is all good. Alrighty, so Heather, I don't see any other hands raised. So it appears that you have a consensus along with me encouraging council and all of us to not only just put out a resolution, but live our lives daily by acknowledging all people and recognizing and showing decency and respect to all people all the time. We could talk more about this later.
Thank you, Mayor, and we'll prepare that. And then I also, because I don't believe in duplication of effort, I can talk offline with Counselor Hensley in regards to some of the plans she mentioned that the university might be working on.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Okay, so that's going to bring us up to the next item on the agenda. And Holly, before I move on, I didn't see anyone else sign on, so we're just going to move on, pass council comments and we're going to move on to our consent calendar A.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Holly, would you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, that takes us to the next item on our agenda is regular business, board commissions, advisory board appointments. Our city clerk, Ms. Martinez?
All right, council. So this was your annual recruitment that we did. We did have a few applicants apply. We had one new applicant for the planning commission, four applicants, two incumbent applicants and two new applicants for the rec board. And for HPAK, we only had one applicant request for appointment. Library board, one person requesting reappointment. And homeless coalition, we had a new applicant, Jeff Alsley requesting to serve as a business community rep. And then we did not receive any applications for tree board. So the way you guys typically vote to make your appointments is by ballot. We have done that. I did send you guys ballots electronically, which I did get in today prior to this meeting. And I can get to my screen here. I will tell you your votes. Right, so for the library board, it was unanimous votes to reappoint Amanda Willner to the library board. Reappointment of Stanley Moyer to Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. And then rec board, you have reappointed Paul Duarte to the rec board and you had a tie for your first round ballots on the record between John Adams and Amy Ortega. So I did send you those. So I'll tell you those in a second. For homeless coalition, you did appoint Jeff Alsley as the business community representative. And those were all your votes for round one. For your round two, I just make sure I have Counselor Carson's vote in. Just got his vote. So you guys have, after your second round ballots for the rec board, you guys have appointed Amy Ortega to the rec board.
You very much, Ms. Holly.
If I could get you guys to do a motion for those appointments, that'd be great.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Ms. Martinez, would you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
And Counselor Carson? The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so very much. Now we will move on down to item D on the agenda. Business brought support by city staff, public works, resolution number nine dash 2020.
Evening, council. Resolution nine 2020 is for the adoption of the water efficiency plan. So the water efficiency plan is a state mandated plan that outlines how we're going to conserve and be more efficient with our water usage. This was about a two-year process coming up with this plan. And throughout this plan, we looked at what our water system is, what our demands are, how we can integrate efficiency into our land use and then using our water smarts committee, looking at different water efficient activities that we can include in our plan and then, you know, figuring out when those should be timed and how we monitor those. This is the last stage in this. As we talked about in our work session about a couple of months ago, our biggest goals are a feasibility study to look at our parks and the golf course and hopefully partner with Adam State to look at how we might be able to have more efficient irrigation systems and then implement that study. Also looking at a toilet rebate program, water efficient giveaways, you know, some sort of package that has maybe a new faucet and, you know, a new bucket potentially, you know, so when you're waiting for your water to warm, you can save some water that way. And then education measures through our utility bills, through maybe some partnerships, through classroom education and so on. So after looking at the water efficiency plan, it's a seven-year plan and the sum of the goals certainly does have some impact as far as fiscal. We're looking at total implementation of $334,000 and change over seven years. Of course, some of that can hopefully be offset by CWCB grant money. So once the goal is in our plan, it's a lot easier to get funding for those. So with that, staff's recommendation is that we adopt the water efficiency plan as presented and happy to answer any questions you might have.
And I just want to clarify, so with that price tag, we are not required to do the goals. So if we don't, if we do not have the fiscal ability to do that or if something else comes up, then there is no punishment. The point of it is to have a plan and to be making efforts in achieving that plan. And so I want to make sure, while that's a large number, I don't want anyone to get sticker shock because this is not locking in that those projects will be done. We will obviously be running things through our annual budget.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, all right, so I don't see any hands raised from council. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution nine dash 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Deacon. Okay, up next, under fire, we have a public hearing and second reading of ordinance number thirteen dash 2020. An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Allison County Fire Protection District. I, Chief, are you today?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful, thank you.
Evening, Mayor Council. Before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement with the Alamos County Fire Protection District to operate and maintain the burn facility that was jointly funded by the city and the fire district. The agreement-
I'm sorry, I think you broke up.
Yeah, that keeps bouncing in and out of the internet connection. I don't know if that's good or bad, so. But anyway, it's the agreement to operate and maintain the burn facility, splitting the cost equally between the city and the fire district. With that, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Chapman. I don't see any hands raised at this moment, so what we'll do is go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. So at this time, we'd like to open up a public hearing in the, for the second reading of ordinance number thirteen dash 2020. If we have anyone who would like to voice any comments regards to this, please do so at this time by raising your hands. Ms. Holly, if you see any hands raised, will you let me, Ms. Martinez, if you see any hands raised, will you let me know?
I do not see any hands raised, sir.
Okay. Seeing that there are no hands raised, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council for council comments. Anyone have any comments? Please raise your hand so I can recognize you. I don't see any hands, so would anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number thirteen dash 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Looks like I have two hands raised. Counselor Carson and Counselor Grego, if you have any further discussion, please make your comments right now. If not, just lower your hand.
For the discussion, I just wanted to apologize for moving in now. I just haven't eaten in all day, so I'm taking bites.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Counselor Carson. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Ms. Martinez, would you like to take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Veho?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you also very much. We're moving right along down the agenda here. Looks like we're on committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports today? Okay, I have two hands raised, three hands raised. I have a, this will be the order. Counselor Carson, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Veho, under committee reports. Counselor Daniel?
So we did have the housing authority board and they are doing some really neat things at the housing authority, very exciting stuff, working on some playgrounds. They've been working really closely with the city library. So I've been really proud of that collaboration. I think that's going really well and they're getting lots of good information and support. They also received some COVID funding to help their residents who may have experienced challenges during COVID. So I really appreciated that as well. And so Anna and her team are talking through that. We are also hoping that the next meeting will be face-to-face. We're not sure, but we're going to try that. We also had the homeless coalition meeting at the end of last month. And that is moving forward. We're still sharing resources and talking through like what all the services are that our community has to offer, but also lots of good sharing about, hey, maybe I can come help with that or hey. And so it's really good community networking as well. And I do think Mr. Alsley being a part of that is going to be very helpful to the group. So it'll be nice to get him rolling. So I think that there's some really just fun movement in both of, both of those committees and organizations.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Veho?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a library board meeting. I'm back on that. Ms. Hensley reminded me. Thank you much. I just want a quick read to you some highlights from that meeting. It's really unfortunate with COVID that their total circulations, adult, child, you know, door counts were just rocking and rolling in February and even growing yet into March, and then everything just fell off the map. But Saleah and her team at the library are awesome and they're doing a lot of different things to keep people engaged with the library. And those things include a lot of like to- And those things include a lot of like to-go kits, okay, community kits. They have like storytime kits for people to check out, different types of backpacks, bird watching, Alamosa trails, Colorado State Park backpacks, you know, toy cars, a lot of those types of things. They're also doing to engage the children in our community. They're doing online storytimes, which is really cool. It's, they're, they're, they're working through it. They have a great staff and they're gonna, they're gonna be okay. Now, there's one also, another thing. They have this little and Andy Rice might have to chime in here real quick, but they have like a little doll from the, from the, it's like a little elf or something that they're putting around the community in different businesses and that to try to get people to go out. And what do you say, go and visit restaurants and businesses and that type of stuff. So Andy, if you could chime in real quick, that'd be great. And if, and that's a, that's a little deal from the library. Thank you.
So the hashtag is where is Larry? And Larry is a gnome. And so I hope gnomes around the world are not offended by your doll reference. But anyway, thank you, Young. That was a good summary. Where's Larry? We're gonna all be able to follow Larry's travels and smile as he highlights businesses and other spots in our community, so thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
Is that Larry at business?
I'm sorry?
I was just joking about this. So is that Larry at business?
All right, thank you. So it looks like, um, thank you for the council comments. We're moving right along here on the agenda. So now we're going to move on down to, I mean, council committee reports, I'm sorry. Now we're going to move on down to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a few different items. First, I wanted to let council know that in regards to the homeless COVID-19 response that we've covered a few times. So the plan for those who are assumed to be positive and those who test positive, we do have a partner hotel and we have to, as of today, submitted our paperwork to the state to get preapproval for that plan. If we are approved, what that means is if we do spend resources per that plan and we have the right documentation and we run it how we said we will, then we are pretty much guaranteed to get the FEMA reimbursement. And as a reminder, just that is only seventy-five percent. We have also pursued some other leads to look at closing that gap for the twenty-five percent. But it is looking like a pretty good plan and hopefully we can move forward soon and have it in place in case we do have someone who is in need of quarantining in that hotel. I also wanted to let council know that we are researching the the information coming out regarding the CARES funding that the state will be passing through. It does require the city and county to work together to submit a joint opt-in request. And so I am beginning those conversations with the county as well as on our own team, taking a look at what we anticipate our costs to be. And so there's a good chance we will have something on your next agenda in relation to partnering with the county to to submit our request for that. I also wanted to share that we had our housing team meeting today, and we received about seven applications or proposals from consultants for our housing needs assessment. It was great to see these companies interested in our community and wanting to help us. We've narrowed it down to the top two, and we plan to do interviews within the next few weeks so we can keep that part moving forward. I also wanted to share that the campsite, we have probably around fifteen individuals who have moved to the dedicated campsite at the rec center. We are working on putting up some signage. We are about three to four weeks out still from getting the fence in. It's been ordered, and so it will get here to be on the south and eastern border. We are also partnering with La Puente and other community partners on if there's volunteers who want to make picnic benches or shelters or those types of things. And so it, there could be some more enhancements going in out there. Additionally, Public Works is looking at getting a water line so we won't have to rely on the water buffalo, which can be kind of time intensive for the county to make sure it's sanitized and sitting out in the sun, it's okay, and and those types of things. So that is still moving forward. And then lastly, or not, not just yet, we are getting some questions on when we will open up City Hall. We need to research what the announcement has been from the governor to better understand what additional city resources we can begin opening up. I know some of it relates to playgrounds. Some of it relates potentially to recreational programming, those types of things. In regards to City Hall, what we are waiting on as a trigger to open City Hall is when libraries can be opened back up. In all honesty, the use that we get of our lobby, there's no point in opening it if the library cannot be open. What we see a lot of times is every once in a while, there's people there who are doing business. But more than that, we see a lot of individuals who are loitering or who might be homeless and those types of things. And even though we are planning to lock the public bathrooms inside and we will have signage for no loitering, it will still be staff's responsibility to engage in a conversation for that individual to leave. And those conversations aren't always quick. They don't always enjoy being told that they cannot be within the city hall. So in all honesty, for all the ways that people can pay, including making an appointment to come in and pay, if that's what they want, we just don't feel that it justifies opening it up to have those types of interactions until the library can open. So we will be tracking that to determine when we open back up City Hall. And then finally, I know we had quite the experience on Monday, and so I wanted to share a little bit with that and offer an apology. We received word Monday morning, well, it came to my attention Monday morning. It might have been on the police department's radar sooner, that we might see some activity from some high school students doing graffiti downtown. And we had looked at sending an email out to the businesses only because we didn't feel that it needed to be escalated beyond that because police had already started identifying some of the youth involved, and we felt that it would be under control by the time that the eleven PM arrived. Unfortunately, the email that we did send to businesses was not written very well. It was too broad and it wasn't specific to it just being youth and graffiti. I did do a correction to that email to the entire group within about five minutes of it going out, indicating that it was related to graffiti. But I think that was overlooked to some degree. And then a different individual on that email group replied to the whole group with information of protesting that was occurring on the front range, which actually had nothing to do with our situation. And then unfortunately, the paper took those things and and got out the the media advisory. And so, you know, we are sorry that the initial email we sent out was not clear. It was not written the way it should have been. My clarification of that should have made it even more clear so it did not escalate into what it did. And spent a lot of time Monday on social media trying to get the the correction out there. But I think it was just a two-hour timeframe from when the email went out to when it was blowing up on on social media, which is crazy. So I, if there's any questions or comments.
Hey, Counselor Carson has his hands up. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Hey, Heather, one quick question real fast before I ask my main question. Can you clarify, or Sam, can you clarify what was going on a while ago as far as a protest? I understood that a few hours ago, there was a protest on Main Street and they were stopping traffic. Is that true? Or do you have any information on that real quick?
I don't have any information on that. I wasn't aware there was any type of protests.
Yeah, at right about five o'clock, I guess. No, it would have been about five thirty. They said that near Maywas, or probably would have been that intersection, that there was a protest and there was people stopping traffic. So anyway, I was just curious about that.
I could, I could respond to that, Counselor Carson. I drove. And they, they, they weren't stopping traffic. They were protesting, they had some signs, and they were being civil. Basically, what they would do is in between the red light and the green light, whenever the red light would show up, some of them would walk out in, in, on the crosswalk and hold up their signs. And as soon as the light turned green, they got out of the way of traffic. But I did experience that myself today.
Okay, so it was pretty, pretty benign?
But it was peaceful. It wasn't, no one wasn't doing anything that was trying to restrict traffic in any way.
And if I could just add to that, I just, from a council perspective, I think there's probably going to be some more to, and I think it's going to be similar to that or similar to the other ones that have occurred. I don't think they're going to be large. I think they're going to be respectful. I think it's going to be a matter of having some signs and and those types of things. We are urging individuals, if they are coordinating or if they are coordinating that, to at least let police know. But obviously, they're not required. But just from monitoring the social media, it does seem like there is, there continues to be interest in having these occur, but they all seem to be at a very low, low level from an aggressiveness perspective.
Good, okay, I did have one question or one. Yeah, I guess a question on the cap. Is there anything that we could do? And I don't know that we can because, you know, it is a public space, but this is probably a question for Sam, too. You know, I, there is, there has been an uptick in traffic in my neighborhood, which I expected to meet. And so there's quite a few people walking up and down my street to the, you know, to the, to the town. And I've talked to a few of them, I've had conversations with them. And I've had more than a couple say that they feel like, they feel like they're being just constantly watched. They kind of feel like they're in a zoo, that that term was used more than once. And it was actually, you know, put on social media. There was some comments to that effect that were really horrible. And and I felt really bad that people were talking like that. But but the thing is, is I know there's quick access with roads, and and these individuals said that it felt like there was people constantly driving through there around that fence and just kind of looking at them, you know, which again, isn't a crime. It's not, it's not a crime to look at people. But again, if we're trying to, you know, if we're trying to make people feel like people and not feel, you know, uncomfortable, I think maybe we should probably try to address that. I don't know if we can, Heather, and I'm not trying to be a pain, and I don't want to put more weight on us because I know we're already doing a ton as a city. But, you know, I just felt kind of bad when they told me that because, you know, our goal is to, to, to help, you know. And so I know we have done a lot, but I was just curious if there's anything we can do to slow that traffic flow from there.
So, um, I, I, so I guess I would be a little surprised if there's that much traffic and if it's that much traffic, that's not individuals who are sleeping in their cars. So from working with Siney, who meets with these individuals every day, we're really focusing on them understanding that there's not supposed to be cars there because there's been some individuals who are homeless, who have thought about taking their cars out there. We'd need to get better signage because it is posted, but it needs to be better posted, that it's only emergency vehicles that are supposed to be pulling into that area. The public is not, and the public nor those who might be camping there should not have vehicles in there. We're also looking, but we need to coordinate with police to make sure that they're open to this as well. But we're looking at maybe even putting a gate at the entrance to to limit that as well because there's, there's not supposed to be other vehicles in there. The only vehicles going in should be those that are dressing the porta potties, the dumpster, the water buffalo. And then we have asked our CSO to drive through there, just not because we're, we're, we're like watching them under a microscope, but we also want to to meet our obligation to the neighborhood that this is going to be something that we do monitor, that we will have a presence. And we want to make sure that that things aren't piling up, if that they are maintaining it from a trash perspective and and those types of things as well. And so we need to get better signage. We're finalizing some of the language we think needs to be the words for for rules, and that will also be on the signage. So we're still working on getting some of that. Now, that's only up to the property line where then it loops in. Outside of that, the people can be driving like-
I just want to make sure that we, you know, I just wanted to pass that information on. And and the fact that it is supposed to be emergency vehicles only is 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 good enough. I mean, you know, we're going to have police through there. I would hope they expect that. I mean, I also think that the fact that we are going to this level, because it is, if you really look at it closely, we're, we're, we're taking it to a whole other level here. And so the fact that we're doing that, these people that are utilizing that city resource also need to be held accountable if they're making messes out there because it is a community resource. So, you know, I, I would hope that they would expect there will be police presence, at least part of the time, checking it out. But yeah, if it's not supposed to be a traffic road, then that's good enough for me. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Carson. Next, we have Counselor Grego has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was going to make this comment, Counselor, but I love talking to the manager. I was quite disturbed with how people continue to destroy our public restrooms. And I talked to a lot of people and is there a way that we can? I don't know what we're doing as far as as Neighborhood Watches and stuff. A lot of people ask, well, can we get that going so they can help in stopping all that, you know? And I don't know, Heather, if, if, if we're, we're pursuing that or what's going, what's happening there?
So I know police had previously tapped certain officers that were going to kind of be the lead for for helping with Neighborhood Watch. But I think when we've worked with the neighborhood, they, they don't, they're not getting engagement. So we'll continue to be there for our partner, but I also think we need to rethink, what does this engagement look like? Because I'm not sure if the the structure of Neighborhood Watch has run its course type of thing because it's, it has not worked. And as Scott White and and Lisa and some of them, when they've been trying to do the Neighborhood Watch for those neighborhoods around La Puente, the the interest just doesn't sustain it from engagement from the neighborhood. One of the items we wanted to work with, with the new CSO, is to have them also work with the the residents that are directly near the park to kind of have it to where they are keeping an eye out and in those types of things. But this is going to be a very, very challenging thing. The city attorney will tell you really, because putting a camera on the outside is not helpful because you don't know who's doing what on the inside. So you can get twenty people that go in there and you don't know which one of them's the one that that did the vandalism. And you don't know at what time it occurred. So we end up watching forty hours of video and and you don't have the evidence you need. So the city attorney has indicated, we can put a camera in the bathroom, not in the stall, but in the bathroom. But I think we're going to have to have really good signage because I think it could be offsetting to individuals. But as far as having evidence for the police to be able to talk to someone on the possibility of them doing the actual vandalism, it's almost going to need to be that extent. But I also think if we had the residents that live around the parks paying more attention, if they have a relationship with this new CSO, and if we can build that up, I think it will help some. But it's not, it's, it won't always be the the hundred percent answer.
Mayor, if I may, Heather, I didn't, I did quite understand. You're saying that the Neighborhood Watch isn't working? People aren't, aren't participating? I hear a lot of people wanting that, and I appreciate what, taking back America, I mean, taking back Alamosa, what they do, you know, that's their, their deal. But they don't speak for the rest of the people out there. And there's a lot of people out there that that want this watch. And and I guess the way you coordinated is how it would work, you know? And I, like I said, I- And I, like I said, uh, taking back America, taking back Alamosa is a whole different thing. And then, and some people don't even want to participate with that.
Well, Charlie, whoever, or sorry, Councilor Grego, whoever is talking to you, please have them contact the police department because they stand ready to work with anyone who wants to do this. This is not because we are not engaged. It's because we need partners from the neighborhood for a neighborhood watch to be effective. So if you're hearing from individuals, please encourage them to contact the police department.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, Council Carson, I see your hand up or is it, was it up by mistake?
No, I, I just, I wanted to say, I, I know that, um, I know that it, it's not necessarily a popular idea. But in my experience, cameras do deter vandalism. So maybe we won't catch people vandalizing the property inside. And I know it's an invasion of privacy to have a camera inside. I'm not necessarily for that. But at the same time, we have to protect the resource for, you know, the entire community. These people are just being horrible. And so, um, I think if we did put signage outside, you know, premises monitored by camera, outdoor bathrooms monitored by camera, whatever the signage says, and then put visible cameras, will at least have an inclination of who's doing it and it will at least be a deterrent. And I, and I say that from experience because I've put security cameras in in many places. And there's been businesses that have just put up a sign that says, this premises is monitored by cameras twenty-four seven. And that is in itself a deterrent. They didn't even have security cameras up. They just had the sign. And so I, I would think that we're at the point now, i- if it's getting that bad, that regularity, that we need to do something. So, you know.
We, we already have, we already have cameras up and we already have a sign up that's.
At that bathroom?
Yes.
And you guys can't catch anybody doing anything?
Because the camera's outside, so you don't know the exact moment that it happens. So you have to watch like twenty hours of the camera time and you got twenty people who come in and out. So you have no way of knowing which individual is the one doing the damage inside.
But they are checked every day or you said every twenty hours?
But I can get you the route. We don't check the cameras and.
No, in the bathroom, somebody cruises by that bathroom tw- at least once a day in the park.
I can follow up with how often we're checking the bathrooms.
I'm just saying, because if it's, if, if it is, it's probably more than likely the same group of people. Cause you don't have, uh, you don't have a population or even a group of people that all want to do that to a restroom if it's something that they utilize. It's probably some, some jerky people. And, and I think we can narrow it down. I'm just saying with cameras and giving, giving the guys the resources or, I don't know, maybe I'm totally off. But in my experience, I think it'd be possible to catch them with cameras, at least figure something out. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Heather.
Captain Mestis, do you want to explain how challenging it is for the charges related to this?
No, I'm not.
No, 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 I just, no, I just want to make sure that, I don't want you thinking we're giving ex- uh, uh, excuses. And so I think for, it'd be important for police to explain what they need to get at the vandalism.
So to answer your question, first of all, our CSOs are checking it morning as soon as they come on and in the evening before they leave. And, and to answer the, um, city manager's question, so we have to pinpoint the exact time when somebody walks in and to identify who they are that created the vandalism or damaged whatever property. And, and it makes it difficult because you have several people that come in and those people that come in don't always report it at that time that they see the vandalism. So, you know, it would be great if somebody came in and said, hey, there's vandalism in here. I just walked in, saw it, don't know who did it. We've kind of pulled back to the cameras and review them, which we can review on a regular basis and identify and pinpoint the exact time when that individual went in there. However, a lot of times you run into people just wearing hoodies, masks now. So it makes it very difficult for us to even identify anybody any, anymore. Um, you know, you got homeless that use that bathroom all the time and they walk in there. Majority of the time we find drug paraphernalias, what we basically find in there. Um, but we are checking the bathrooms regularly every day and I've been working with Andy on that as well.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't see any hands raised at this moment. So, uh, we'll move on down the agenda to, um, local liquor licensing authority actions, uh, consent calendar A. Anyone like to, um, make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar B.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Okay, uh, Ms. Martinez, will you please, uh, take the vote?
Council Broyles?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Council Grego?
Yes.
Council Carson?
Yes.
Council Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right. Good. Thank you. All right. We're moving right along here, Council. All right. So now we're under council comments. So I know all of you probably have some type of comments, so at this time raise your hand and then I'll identify the order in which all of you will be making your comments. Okay? All right. So it looks like I only have, looks like I only have three people who want to make comments in the, uh, comment section. Here's the order. Council Brawls, Council Daniel, Council V Hill, Council Brawls.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I appreciate our community so much. Uh, particularly youth, because you know, while there's some protests, they didn't get, they were not angry protesting or rioting. And there's been, I guess I've heard there's not been hardly any property damage, which I appreciate. Um, people in my ward have expressed, uh, that appreciation and I, I appreciate the people in Alamosa because, you know, all this shows that Alamosa is a good place for economic development, for businesses to come and be safe. And, uh, I, I appreciate that so much. Uh, uh, I'm up here north of Seattle and Seattle would be on beyond, over a billion dollars in property damage. And, uh, the rioting is just, um, beyond control. You know, and, and when you see a place like Alamosa, uh, what, what a great example, I think, even though there's some protesting, which is fine, but it has not got out of control. And I appreciate people, our administration, all, all, all the leadership in the city. Uh, and, uh, and, and everyone in the city that's, that's made that happen. So I just wanted to express my, my appreciation.
Thank you, Council Brawls. Um, we have Council Daniel followed by Council V Hill, followed by Council Hensley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to say, Heather, I really appreciate the update on the camp. It sounds like conversations are still happening. So thank you, uh, for that. I know there have been some people who've been staying there who have some ideas and it sounds like those are all coming to, to be, um, having conversations. So thank you. Um, the other thing, so earlier this year, we, um, voted someone off who had been on one of our committees and then tonight we did the same thing. I, in the rec boards especially, and I realize that some of our boards are more exciting or more fun or more, that's probably not the right word, but they, they attract more people than others. And the rec board is one of them that attracts a lot of interest with a lot of good energy that comes with that. I'm wondering if we ever have looked at potentially raising the number of rec board members? And I don't want it to be out of control. Um, or if we've talked about especially on that, um, and I know, you know, interest goes up and down. If we've ever talked about term limits or someone has to be off for two years or, and then come back. Um, I just, that board in particular, I think we have a lot of really vested people in it and a lot of people interested in it because we're such a good recreational community. Um, and so if there is something that we could do to help utilize all of the interests that we have, um, I just would like us to think about that because I do think that rec board is, is one of our more challenging boards because we always have really excellent people who want to come on and we have really excellent people who are the incumbents to want to stay on. Um, and so I just, um, I just am struggling with the rec board in particular. Um, so it doesn't have, we don't have to have any kind of resolution tonight. I just kind of would like to throw that out there to see if that's anything we've ever thought about. If all of our boards have to look exactly the same, if there are subcommittees we could create, I don't know. I just think there's a lot of energy around recreation and I think we could really, um, show the people who continue to apply or want to participate a different, that we appreciate them differently if we could, could look at that differently. Um, so just as a thought to staff, I don't need anything right now. Um, and then I'm really excited that we are able to go, go back into restaurants and go back into some sort of normal. Um, and because this is, this is what I do and last month was mental health awareness month. But people are going back to work, but they're going back in different places and ways, you guys. And the financial stress that people will be under, the relationship stress that they're under. We are still going to have a long recovery time, even though things are opening up. And so I just want us to continue to look out for each other and look out for our neighbors and, you know, offer help as needed. Um, because this is still a pretty anxious time for people and, um, still, you know, people are worried about their bills and their house and, and things like that. So, you know, as we continue to get back to more normal, um, recognizing that there will still be lots of people who need our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Daniel. Council V Hill, followed by Council Hensley, followed by Council Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, um, have a few things to, um, say. Number one, I thought the exact same thing as you, Ms. Daniel, about the rec board. It is one of our, I think, our most popular board people. We get tons of, um, of applicants every time there's, um, openings. And I, I agree with you. I think maybe we should expand it one or two positions and, I don't know a number, but we just talked about it. I don't know. Um, because a lot of people have a lot of good things to, uh, uh, offer that board. And rec, recreation in Alamosa is growing tremendously. So let's kind of capitalize on, on the talent that we have locally. Next is, um, I'm sure you all have seen over the last couple of weeks, there's been a big, um, COVID nineteen uptick in center. And I work and teach up there and a lot, a few of my students and their parents have it. Uh, so it's been tough. Um, there are some groups coming together to help, uh, some of the folks in the center. If you want some of that, um, information or how to help. Uh, they're talking about like, uh, uh, cooking home, because we, so, so, um, one of the principals there who lives in Alamosa explained, explained to me that, um, creating food boxes for these people is awesome, but they just have so little energy to cook and it's hard for them to do that. So they're looking for maybe some home cooked meals, warm meals, uh, once in a while for some of these families. Uh, I said I would pass that along. And I think we also, uh, have that same opportunity with the folks here in our community who've been affected at the mushroom farm. So we're talking about folks like Lisa Lucero and that, and that group, they're doing stuff. I'm sure you all know too. I just want to, uh, throw that out there to see if we can help out with some of that stuff. Uh, next is, um, kind of dealing with that, with that whole thing on Monday afternoon and the, and the riot that was coming down from Pueblo and Springs and the bus and the rioters are coming and, and people freaked out. And I don't know about the rest of you, Council, but I, I was on my phone for like three or four hours trying to just calm people down. Businesses, people who live here, and then Walmart shut down and all this stuff. It's just crazy. And I think it's, um, important for us as counselors for when this stuff happens because we, we do get some of this information quicker than most. I think we need to do a better job, Council, of letting people know that, uh, uh, communicating truth and not craziness on social media, especially during this time. I think it's, I think it's on us to, to do a little bit of that kind of stuff. And you, and you probably did. I just want to hit that home a little bit with some of you guys. Um, and then finally, with this whole, uh, uh, with the riots and the protests and the demonstrations and the, and the death of that, that black man in Minnesota, Mr. Floyd. Um, I have been, uh, approached by many young people in town um, with some questions, uh, for our police force. Now, this does not in any way mean that I'm critiquing the police. I just want some, I have questions from constituents that I said I would ask you all. So I'm, I'm glad you're here, Mr. Mestis, Captain Mestis. Um, and, and, uh, so some of the questions I, I have is, um, what are some things that you guys do um, to ease hostile situations when you make a, a stop or an arrest or something like that? What, what does that look like?
So, I mean, we've attended many trainings. So if we encounter those kind of issues, we can talk the individual down without violence. I mean, that's our primary goals, to talk somebody down. Um, if we have an idea of who they are and they decide to take off, then we can always arrest them later, maybe or file charges, but whatever the case may be. But, you know, there's always those circumstances where you just can't predict happen. So, you know, it, it's very hard for our part. And, you know, we got to protect ourselves as well and, and the citizen as well. So, a- and, and we do everything we can. We have annual trains where we kind of just go over this and discuss it amongst the departments. So hope that answers your question.
Uh, that's great. I, I really appreciate that. And, and my following question, you kind of touched on it, was the trainings. Can you, can you expand on that a little bit about maybe how many hours that is or how many times a year you kind of relook at that kind of stuff?
So post identification is that we'd have to have forty hours of in-service training that's mandated. And then above and beyond that, we have, we have in-service training every month. Um, sometimes we don't because of situations, but at least ten months out of the year, we do have in-service training. We also have access to Police One Academy, which is in-service training. And it goes on to how to deal with mentally ill people, how to talk to them, how, you know, all that kind of deal as well. So.
Okay. Thank you very much, Captain Mestis. And my last question is this, is can you explain, um, your body camera policies, what, uh, when you're making a stop or when you're, um, involved with a person out there? How does that work and what does that look like?
So anytime we're dealing with the public or involved with the public, any type of call, whatever it may be, the camera is activated at all times. Um, recently we just went to some U tasers. So anytime if the taser is activated or the lights are activated, it automatically activates the camera. So that camera is always on.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Captain Mestis. So yeah, those, those are some of the questions I got and I'm glad we have some answers for that and I'll be communicating back to some of these people. Um, and then just kind of going back with, um, Sarah Ramirez and her comments, and then I'm, I'm really glad, Ms. Hensley, what, that you talked about that there's a group on campus that wants to talk about, um, uh, have a round table. You know, I'm, I, I guess the question I have, is there still a black student alliance at Adam State?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. And I, I, I know that our, um, what do you say? The, the number of African Americans in Alamosa is pretty low, but there's, there, there are, they are here. And, um, I just, this is, this is, this is crazy, guys. And this is my, it's my own personal beliefs. This is what I'm feeling. This is what I'm thinking. This has, I'm not speaking on behalf of Council, but this is enough. This is, has to stop. And, and, and like Mr. Grego said earlier, we have, we have to be the change locally. It has to start here. And maybe it works its way up, but this has to stop. And our police force is awesome and they are trained and they are diverse. And I think it's just important that we have these conversations. Um, but, but black people are dying, uh, more at police stops than other folks and it's not okay. And those are my thoughts. And I want to do, I want to do whatever I can to help this. Because I believe if you don't say anything or if you don't do anything, uh, that's not okay either. Thank you.
Thank you, Council V Hill. Uh, I think Heather has her hand up to address some of the Council V Hill's comments. And then we're going to go to, uh, Council Hensley, followed by Council Carson. Go ahead, Heather.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to offer some additional information and then also make sure that, um, what Captain Mestis shared, there's some key points and, and that, that we picked up on those. So in regards to de-escalation or, um, things that the police do to try to ensure that, that things don't escalate, because that's not in anyone's best interest. So when we received word that there was going to be an armed protest, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, I think I shared with you that the chief contacted the organizers in advance. That way they could talk through what the expectations were, that they understood we would have police there, but it's. That way they could talk through what the expectations were, that they understood we would have police there, but it's also something where when you have that communication. It's harder to make the person the enemy and and it becomes a little bit more of a partnership and and. And building that in advance. And so that's the other reason if we have individuals coordinating protests that. We really do want them to contact police first because we we do not want it to escalate and we want it to be positive. And it's an opportunity for the police to explain what their role is and not. In regards to the training. Our officers are really well-trained and it's hard as a layperson to imagine it because we think people act like us, but they get to interact with the public. That are not like us and they're not predictable. And so sometimes the training, when you brought up like a traffic stop. They they have very good training in regards to if someone is not cooperating, how they handle that without it needing to to escalate. Captain Mestas pointed out that if they know who the individual is and they just run away or they do something like that, they can always issue the ticket. Later at that time, if they have the body cameras, there's times we've used the drones. So if we needed video information in order to follow up with our enforcement instead of engaging at that point in time. So that helps kind of create some distance there as well. In regards to the use of the body cameras, I'm not sure what. What the person who asked you that, I'm not sure why they were asking that, but I want to make sure because body cameras can be a little sensitive, both for the public and our officers. And so it is our policy that they have to be on and and for me as the city manager, the value of that is. There's a lot of times there will be an interaction and then we will get a complaint from that individual indicating that the officer was cussing at them or that they were aggressive. And when we go back and watch the video, we're able to either say that is accurate or we're able to say that's not accurate. And so. It allows us to. To do a fairer job of evaluating sometimes what the complaints might be or not be. It also is effective from a court perspective. I will say it's unfortunate what's happened. A little bit to our law enforcement because with the televisions that's out there and and all that, a lot of times the juries. Don't necessarily just believe the officer anymore, which is really, really too bad and disappointing. So that's when the videos can play an important role. We are not filming people trying to violate their rights or to do anything like that or because we automatically think they're guilty of something. It is just a tool that is very effective at making sure we have a clear and unbiased picture of what those interactions are. But I think our police force, they deal with a lot and and they do have a lot that we don't know and. The more we can give them the tools that protect them and the training that help them, I think, you know, the better our community is and the safer we keep our officers.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Brooks. Okay, up next, we have. Counselor Hensley followed by Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Brawls.
So I'm going to try to avoid, obviously, a lot of what other people have said I agree with, so I'm going to try not to be repetitive, but one thing I do want to talk about is. Just celebrating our city. I do think. With some of the things that have happened, what's really nice is even on Monday, things got blown out of proportion, but how all the owners came and they were at their. Business and it was done in a, I felt from what I could see in here, a positive way, just being there to protect each other and to help each other out. And then and just the different things that have happened and and even the passion and obviously. It's stressful times and so sometimes it may not come out quite the right way, but at the same time, we've got a pretty great community and our downtown and all of our owners and. Just everybody ready to support each other and help each other out. So I try to really look at those positives and how great that is and also us. Heather, you've done a great job in regards to your staff and everybody, the police. The parks and rec, everybody who's come together and all the things they're doing and there's so many things that are just not the same. So when we talk about not being normal. Is there's so many things that are not normal every day for everybody. And wow, I really think as a rule, we are doing a really great job and. Really pulling together and so I just think it's pretty awesome and even I know I saw Council, Council on V Hill. At, we made lunches for a bunch of the kids and things like that to be handed out at East and I was there one day, so there could have been others there that was just on the day I saw. But it's just all of this volunteerism, helping each other out, supporting each other. I just wanted to celebrate it and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Carson followed by Counselor Brawls.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to really, really thank our community, our PD, like like Counselor Hensley said, I mean. There's so much negative negativity out there and so many knee jerk reactions and so many people, you know. Creating, you know, creating more bad in 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 reaction to a horrible act and. I wanted to thank our PD for for what they do every day. I see them, I see how they interact with people on a daily basis and. We have a great police department and so we need to be thankful for that. And we have a great city staff, we need to be thankful for that. They work hard to make sure that, you know, everybody in our community is safe. I want to thank our council. We have an extremely, you know, extremely diverse council from backgrounds to attitudes to, you know, political views. And we are united. We're very united as a council and so I wanted to thank you guys and and you know, pass that to our community, like like they said, thank our kids here, that they're not out of control, that they're not being, you know. The way some of this, this, these other places are handling things. So I just wanted to, you know, say thank you to everybody tonight because we're dealing with a lot as a community. Everybody is, as a country we are, but you know, we can't, we want to be a good example and I think we are. We are a good example every day. And so I really want to just thank you guys for for being there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Thank you. Counselor Brawls?
I just wanted to come back on again and kind of share a little bit of different feelings. What, you know, I I guess I don't quite share the same feelings as Counselor V Hill. With regards to the alarm, I think Alamosa is fantastic. When you look at the other parts of the country, we're not in Minneapolis. And I know two years ago when we had our retreat, we talked about how the culture of Alamosa, how we blend together and how and how great it is. And I think we have a more unified city than 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 a lot of other cities, even cities around Alamosa. And I I just don't like the native talk that can perpetuate, you know, protest. I think as we get together, as we talk, we've talked about having a round table. As we communicate, as we respect each other's views and as we talk positive about our community, you know, that's the way we keep our community great and I. I think we have a great community, not not near the concern that other communities, but you know, let's let's keep our great community going. And you know, that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, I see Counselor V Hill has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to respond to Mr. Boyle's. I don't think I believe I said our community is offered, are not great or not united or not. And I, I. I admire our police force too. I I said those things as well. I just. Nationally, there's some things that have going on that I just don't like and I don't think it's okay. And I think it's, I think it's my job as a leader in in town to address some of those things. I don't think that stuff is going on here and I'm glad that our our protests and our and our demonstrations have been peaceful. I think it's great. Like Ms. Hensley said, some of the things, all the other stuff that people are doing across town, across the valley. To help each other during a tough time is awesome and I and it's and that's great and I acknowledge those things. I just think what happened in Minnesota is not okay and I want, and I think it needs to be said. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brawls, I see your hands still up. Were you intending for it to be up or not? Okay, you have any other comments? I noticed that Counselor Grego, you didn't raise your hand, so I just wanted to make sure before I close everything up and adjourn the meeting.
Mayor, no, I don't. Maybe just to echo what everybody else is saying that we do have a great community here and. And it's good to get out and visit with the community and if there's problems, talk about it, bring it to the, bring it to us. I've I've called the city manager, done a lot of stuff, you know, it's it's important. If there's, there's a little small fire out, fire out there. It's better to get it shut down right away before it turns into a forest fire. So there's a lot of ways is just talk to the people. Listen, listen to the people, you know, that's like Counselor V Hill says, we're here as leaders. To lead this community and if they have problems, we need to find a way to address them or or get them some kind of communication. So, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome, Counselor Grego. So I'll I'll wrap everything up. I want to thank our law enforcement officers and and. I noticed one more thing before I go and Counselor Daniel, I didn't see your hand up either, so just wanted to make sure. So I want to thank our law enforcement officers and all of our first responders during this challenging time. And I want, I want to thank all the people who've been mindful, vigilant and respectful in all areas throughout our community. During our country's history, it's taken people from all walks of life to make meaningful change. Every day for the rest of our lives, we can make a positive difference in all lives by being proactive and getting involved in people's lives who may. Be from a different culture than yours, having those conversations, having that dialogue, sitting down and sharing a meal. Because I believe the more we seek first to understand one another, the more we're more likely to be understood. The more we interact with people and be around one another, the more we will find that we have so much in common. And so much that we can do together as a community. Look at our council right now. Look at the makeup, the diversity. We have a different representation in all, from all walks of life and all different races. And you don't see us misbehaving and doing things that are totally disrespectful. You don't see us trying to do things that's hurtful. And that's causing a divide between one another. This is an example of what. America in the worst, rest of the world could be like if they just follow the lead of people like us. We all interact with one another. We all have conversations with one another. We all sit down and have meals with one another. We all talk about our families, our friends and the challenges, the ups, the downs and all of the things that are going on in our lives. And then when we do that. We realize that we have so much in common. So I just hope that you all don't take this as something that we do for a night. It's not something that we do for a day. This is not something that you do for a week, our month, our year. This is something that we have to do for the rest of our lives if we hope to have the meaningful change that we hope to see in our community. And throughout the world. That's all I have tonight. I hope everybody have a good evening. Take care and this meeting is adjourned.